I'm serious Triad. The music's on.
We're online. Cell phones, everybody?
Sorry.
Yes, no clicky pens?
No clicky pens?
Everybody ready? All right, good morning, everybody. Before we get started, I'd like to invite Pastor Jordan Muck from Community Gospel Church, who is going to give our invocation for today. Could all rise.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we come before you today grateful for the privilege of serving our local community. Your word reminds us in James that if anyone lacks wisdom, they should ask you, who gives generously to all without finding fault. So this morning, God, we ask for your wisdom. Guide these leaders according to Scripture. Give them discernment and clarity as they make decisions that impact the lives of many. God, your word also teaches us through the prophet Micah to act justly, love mercy, walk humbly with you. May these principles guide every conversation and decision that will take place here today and in the future. Let this be a place where Christ-like love, biblical justice, and humility prevail. Lord, the Apostle Paul reminds us in the letter to the Romans that all authority is established by you. We pray that each person here would lead with godly integrity, compassion like Jesus, a soft heart that seeks the common good. May they be instruments of your peace and justice. Father, we thank you for the gift of your Son, Jesus, who came not to ser- not to be served, but to serve, to give his life for a ransom for many. May those who don't know you as Savior and Lord come to his saving faith under the blood of Christ today. And may those who do know you see this place as a mission field, evangelizing and edifying daily as we see the day approaching. We lift up our community, the beloved people who populate it. May your hand of protection and provision be upon Marshall County. Bless those who serve, comfort those who are in need, and may the light of Christ shine brightly in our midst. We pray these things in the powerful and matchless name of Jesus Christ, the Savior and the sacrifice for the sins of this world. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, notice that a quorum is present. Mr. Patterson is excused as today is his first day of school, I believe. The regular business meeting of the Marshall County Council for this Thursday, August 8, 2024, will come to order. And before we proceed to the agenda, this would be the time for any member of the public who wishes to give input to the council on any agenda items to come forward. Are there any members of the public who have input on agenda items? And hearing none, Chair would also like to note that later in the meeting, we will be considering and voting upon our consent agenda, which includes our additional appropriations and transfers of appropriations. Copies of the consent agenda are available at the back of the room for your review. And with that, we'd like to welcome the first item on our agenda, Chastity Keller from Casa. Good morning.
Chastity Keller, I'm the Casa Director. It's time again for us to file our grants. They are due before October 1st. We are receiving from the State Office $13,865 this for 2025. That means the matching grant from the county should be $11,786. That money has been put into the Circuit Court budget. There's also a 15% in-kind match, which is our office, our internet security, those kind of things. And then I also have the opportunity to file for a capacity building grant, which can be up to $5,943. Those funds can only be used for keeping our volunteers, getting volunteers, advertising, training. You don't have to match that. I am not guaranteed those funds until the first of the year, so I don't have it in our budget. I just use those as extra. And then they want the receipts and things of where exactly that went. So what I'm asking is that you match the grant within the Circuit Court budget.
Are there any questions from the council?
Other than thank you for what you do. It's a program that I've known for a lot of years and followed, and it's a good program.
Thank you. We have a lot of really good volunteers who've been doing it a long time. So without them, we couldn't do it. Also on your desks, I did put a QR code from the Indiana Youth Institute, and they have a data book. And it's electronic, and it gives the information of family, community, health, education, economic well-being for our youth locally. Each county is separate. And kind of give you an idea of where we sit. We don't sit as good as we could. We can improve. And you don't have that information if it's not been made available to you. So if you could take time and take a look at that book, it'll really help you understand where we're coming from.
Thank you.
So you're looking for a motion of support saying that the county will match the grant?
Yep, and that's what I need so I can...
I will make that motion.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Johnson and a second by Mr. Harmon to give a show of support to match the grant. Is there any discussion? I'd like to say from my perspective that not only am I committed to matching the grant, I'm committed to make sure that your office is fully funded, as was our commitment last year, and as we fulfilled from additional grants. And so I want to make sure that you guys feel safe and comfortable that your office will be fully funded next year, so...
Okay. I do know we'll probably be about $30,000 short for next year. And then also, the commissioners have asked to have one of you meet with them and Judge Charisi as time goes by, and we have a discussion of how we move forward to make this more of a sustainable position and program.
All right. Any additional discussion?
I just did your comments. We support it. We supported it last year. The funding was originally desirable to come out of restricted funds, like the opioid non-restricted and other things, but we got her done, and I thank you for coming and helping us out with that. And so we absolutely support it.
Great.
Any additional discussion? All right, then all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the motion's agreed to.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Have a good day.
We have Sheriff Matt Hassel with the commissary report. Good morning, Sheriff.
This is a biannual report required by state statute to the council, and all you have to do is accept that I turned in my report to you.
This could be pretty quick.
All right, are there any questions for the sheriff on the commissary report? Is there a motion? I've got a motion by Mr. Masterson and a second by Mrs. Cox to accept the sheriff's biannual commissary report. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the report is accepted as presented. Saw your jail numbers. I think that was probably last week those numbers came out. Looked like we've still got about 100 empty beds out there, right?
Let's see, let me pull that up about, where as of August 1st, we had 134, which is, that's real good. That's where we could be low. It's always better to be lower, but safety too, so...
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll be around for later.
Sounds good. And we've got the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Hassettler, for joining us this morning. Just wanted to have a discussion about the status of the Planning Commission's 2024 budget, so...
I'm Dave Hassettler. I live at 133 North Yule Trail, Waukerden, in Pope Township, about as far northwest as you can get, in Marshall County.
All right.
I assume I needed to do that.
Well, thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
I know we, you and I haven't had any individual discussions about this, but we've had, as a board, discussions with Mr. Adley. Mrs. Cox and I shared the situation...
Mr. Adley has shared most of those conversations with me also. And I think that's the appropriate way to do it, so I thank you for that.
So I guess we're trying to figure out what the proper way of moving forward is. That you guys have exhausted the 2024 budget on a number of items. And just wanted to, I guess, get your input on what you think the proper way of moving forward is, and then to hear from the rest of the council, because obviously, I don't get to speak for the council. It's always best when we do that as a group, and so...
You're asking me, or you want to tell me?
Well, I would think that we had established a process with Ms. Radley to provide additional appropriations for matters that were urgent.
Obviously, that's not working very well, because, one, you've got me in here, and obviously, I'll be blunt, I'm not happy that I'm here, but I'll do my responsibilities. But, and number two, if you're going to do it that way, you need to be timely in your responses to his requests. We are a part of the government of this Marshall County, and we have roles. All of us have to perform in this process, and he has roles that he has to do. When he has a request put before him that he needs legal advice on, most of the time, he'll get ahold of me and make sure I'm aware of, especially in our current circumstances. And then, secondly, then he sends his email to you. I understand that was a protocol and how we were to do this. I'm asking you, you're going to need, and I'll be blunt, you need to respond a little quicker. When he sends you a request a week ago and you respond this morning, that's not appropriate for us to be able to do, for him to do his job.
Let me jump in there.
You promised, you promised you weren't going to blindside me. I appreciate that, because I'll leave.
I'm not going to blindside you.
I don't have to be here. You can request all day long. I'll walk out. I don't have to be here. I'll provide whatever information I can provide, but you will let us do our jobs, because we have people we report to. They are the public, yes. No, I'm not an elected position. I'm appointed. I'm appointed by the county commissioners. I'm in the middle of my second term of doing it, and it was a pleasure to do that. I enjoy, I don't enjoy is not right, but I took the responsibility seriously, and I still do. So when you ask me to do, take that position, not you personally, when I go, I took it. I take it very seriously, and I'll continue to do that. But you need to make sure you're providing the resources so I can do my job. Or, as I told the county commissioners on Monday, I will do this job if they tell me, no, you can't do that anymore. I know how the world turns. I know, they're my boss. Laws are not asking me to do something illegal? Fine, I'll quit.
Before we get too far afield here, I actually would like to get Mr. Labin's input on what the statutes say and what you're recommending for the council as far as how we should handle this situation based on what you've read in the law.
Sure. I appreciate, I watched your conversation with the county commissioners, and I appreciate that you went there and you said, you know, you're still learning the rules of the game, that, you know, this has been a process. You've learned a lot about county government through this, and this is just another step, I think, in that process. One of the things that was interesting in that conversation with the commissioners that you had was that you said you report to the commissioners and they are your boss. That is only partially true. The council is also your boss.
I don't know who you are, but they are not my boss. So don't even go there. We're going by Indiana Code. Indiana Code says this. Don't go there. I'll leave. I can leave, that's okay.
Indiana Code 36.7, Indiana Code 36.74401.
I don't know who you are. I have no idea who you are.
Do you want to talk about Indiana Code?
Do you live in Marshall County?
Do you want to talk about Indiana?
Do you live in Marshall County?
If I could step in, please. For disclosure, I listened to the commissioners' meeting on Monday, and Mr. Hassettler was still undecided whether he was going to come to the meeting or not. I feel it's important that he and the rest of the public, here's the county council's rationale and the side to the story, because there's two sides to every story. I sent him an email, and I was, and I'm going to keep my commitment to treat him professionally and not to blindside him. I didn't do that. I didn't even get a word in. But I am going to talk about some things, because I think on Monday's meeting, Mr. Hassettler came in earnest, genuinely asking for advice, and that's fine. But I think the advice that he was given on Monday was atrocious, because frankly, there was reference to the statute, and yet no citations of the statute were given. The statute wasn't even read as far as to what the roles and the powers of the plan commission are. I had to look into, there was also advice to just basically disregard the legal authority of the county council by the commissioners. Mr. Clotts abstained or actually voted no on that. But I thought that was very bad advice. I want to read to you the statute. Mr. Labin was in the process of doing that. I had to learn that when it comes to plan commissions, the state government has actually defined by statute different types of plan commissions. Marshall County is an advisory plan commission, and because of that, the funding is detailed specifically in the statute, okay? I see 36-7-4-308 subsection A, advisory, and I confirmed with Mr. Adley that we are an advisory plan commission. It's actually defined by the members. We have a nine-member board, and I kind of knew that was the answer, but I wanted to be sure. In that section, it says, "After a legislative body has adopted an ordinance establishing a municipal or county plan commission, the fiscal body of the municipality or county, as the case may be, may make appropriations to carry out the duties of the commissions." May, it's not a mandate, it's not a shall. Section 401 of the chapter, "Each plan commission shall supervise the fiscal affairs of the commission and prepare and submit an annual budget in the same manner as other departments of the county, as the case may be, and be limited in all expenditures to the provisions made for the expenditures by the fiscal body." In other words, we can write the budget and determine how much money is needed for legal. In 2023, the plan commission spent $3,003.77. We budgeted them for 2024, almost triple, $8,500. They went through their budget for legal within the first five or six months, and we have the right, as the fiscal authority, to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars by saying no. I tell you what, when I heard some of the legal advice being given without statutory citations, I was appalled. And then when I heard about this contract, let me read to you a quote. "I don't know what Derek's contract says, but it may say, 'I'm going to attend all the plan commission meetings.'" And I think that's what the contract says, county attorney. What does the contract says? Contract says, "On an as requested basis." Okay, so there is no mandate requirement that the county plan commission attorney must show up, okay? And so when I look at stuff like this, and I'm thinking, man, there's just another side of this story that the public needs to know. Mr. Labin, if directives are being made to defy the county council, the authority to uphold its authority to limit and to say no, what happens when there's this open defiance of the controls put in place by the county council? What happens?
Well, ideally, Mr. Hassettler stays and we have a conversation, so he can actually get the code and understand it, instead of just having an argument about what was told to him by the commissioners without any actual citations to what the code really is. If he doesn't want to come, this is how I see it playing out. Mr. Jones is going to be requested to attend meetings, and the person who asks him to intend to attend those meetings is encumbering public funds without authorization, without permission, which is a felony in the state of Indiana. Mr. Jones will not be paid, because there is no money in the county budget for that. Mr. Jones has told me he will sue. When Mr. Jones sues, we will sue Mr. Hassettler.
And so we have all this talk of lawsuits going around, and I'm going to take offense to this last comment made at the plan commission, at the commissioners' meeting. Mr. Burrows, the plan commission is being held hostage by the county council. I take offense to that. We put our agenda out there, there was elections, and the public has spoken. They don't want the solar. They voted for people who didn't want solar. I think the public is being held hostage by two commissioners, who will do not, will not do the will of the public. I truly believe that, because quite frankly, this is unbelievable to me. It's unbelievable to me.
Oh, Councilman Harmon, just because we've been talking about statutes, the citation for that criminal is 354341. We're encumbering public, we're encumbering funds you're not authorized to. So there's statutory authority for that, too. Just make sure it's out there so we know, so they can look it up.
And then you have talk threatening to sue, threatening to sue, not from you, Mr. Labin. That's irresponsible. The lawsuits that are going to come to this county are because two county commissioners will not do the will of the people and stop this debacle. In 2013, I believe, we had a very similar issue with wind turbines. Environmental concerns, unsightly, property values, subsidies, those are all the reasons given to deny the wind turbine effect in Marshall County. It's the same thing for solar. The people in 2013 spoke, and they actually listened to the people in 2013. Why is it different in 2014, or 2024? It seems to me that if the will of the people were being respected, we would have no problems going forward. I rest my case.
Well, I was hoping that we were going to have a productive conversation. I'll tell the rest of the council before the meeting, I asked Mr. Labin simply to educate Mr. Hassettler about the council's proper roles in checks and balances here, to make sure that he was aware of any potential repercussions for proceeding on this route, and that we would give them an opportunity to avoid, you know, any more unnecessary confrontation. That was my hope.
Mr. Chairman, you've been very, very gracious to anyone who comes before this board. You've not belittled anyone. You've been very professional and very polite. And honestly, maybe sometimes I get a little passionate, too, but you know? You set up a system, with all due respect, so that the plan commission can operate, okay, without stifling debate. They ran out of their money. We actually set up a system in which you could transfer legally funds to help them in certain areas.
Yeah. And I will say, just for the public record, the only request that they've made that was not approved was for something that was not urgent. It was not something that had to be completed immediately. All of the cases that folks need to have advertised to get before the board is owning appeals were promptly approved. But we are not legally required to approve every one of their additional appropriations requests. And the things that were not urgent, that could wait, I simply suggested to Mr. Adley that he include those in his 2025 budget request, which I believe was very reasonable.
Actually, it's further than that. In the statute that I was trying to hand to Mr. Hassettler that he wouldn't take, it says it is his responsibility to work within the confines of the budget set. That is his responsibility under state law.
Any other comments from the council on this? I believe that it may be appropriate. I think it was expressed during the commissioners' meeting, that Mr. Hassettler intends to continue to move forward, spending beyond his budget and disregarding the authority of the council on this issue. Might it be appropriate for us to seek assist and desist order from the court?
We can try. I mean, I don't know what Mr. Hassettler's going to do. Clearly, he was upset. Clearly, he didn't come here wanting to have a conversation. He had his mind made up. It would be my hope that he would watch this, because they're all recorded, and that he would look up the statutes, that he would seek counsel, and that he would engage in a conversation with the council about how the best path to go forward. Or he would contact Mr. Adley and have Mr. Adley contact the council about the best path to go forward, and that he would work within the confines of the statutes and do his statutory duty. So I would hope that we wouldn't have to go there, but I don't know, because we didn't get that far.
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't want to seek monetary damages against anybody. I certainly wouldn't want to seek criminal prosecution against anybody, but I do think it may be good, maybe just to get a court to weigh in on this and clarify the situation. That's just a thought. What's the will of the council?
I wish that the clarification would be that there are limitations, okay? And that the misperception that the plan commission in any area of government is automatically is automatically given unlimited amounts of money. I mean, where do you cap the legal expense? Do you cap it at 5,000, 500,000, 5 million? Surely, there's a cap. Well, who decides the cap? The county council. It's within our rights. And we can do this because it's within our rights, and we did it. Personally, I think it's a waste of money to continue going down a path in which the people don't want us to go down. I think it's a waste of money. The commissioners have all the right to advance it. I think we have all the rights to stop it, and that's where we're at.
Yeah, and I say that, you know, the founding fathers at the federal level and the folks that crafted our state constitution and our state statutes believe in separation of powers and checks and balances. And the purpose of checks and balances is to stop bad things from moving forward, that sometimes one body exercises its power against the other body, and yes, it does create gridlock, and yes, it is micromanagement. But that's our role under the state statute in situations where we believe that the powers or government are being exercised contrary to the will of the people. So anything else from the council on this issue?
Question.
Yeah, Mr. Masterson.
Is there any reason, I mean, rather than going to radical means and talking about this, why can't the legal counsel from our board and the legal counsel of the commissioners get together and with the people that this directly is involving with all of this conflict and everything, come up with a plan so that it doesn't have to go to the courts? Because we are all adults, and I think we need to extend the olive branch and go forward that way. If there's a communication problem between what representation of one board has over the other, I think the attorneys from both bodies need to get together. They need to talk. They try to, we need to work this out. I don't think this is anything that should go to a court system, and you know, we are all here for the betterment of Marshall County, and I think we need to be adults about it.
And I completely agree with that. Following our last meeting, I had asked Mr. Labin to reach out to Mr. Jones and to explain the council's position, and you did have that conversation.
I did. I called Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones' position was that he was going to attend whatever he wanted to attend, and they weren't interested in what the council had to say.
Can you say that louder?
Can you say, can you say that louder? I couldn't hear you.
Sure. I, I reached out to Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones' position was that he was gonna attend whatever he felt he needed to attend, and that the council's position was not gonna be held. He asked for a written letter saying what was gonna be authorized and what wasn't gonna be authorized. And I told him that process had already been, been put in place and explained to Mr. Adley, and that the council wasn't, you know, making any determinations beforehand, that everything would be held on a case-by-case basis. But once again, that, that case was confrontational. It ended with Mr. Jones saying he was going to sue the county. I have not yet seen that lawsuit. So I don't, once again, I don't know what's going on on the other side. And it's my hope that, you know, the reasonable conversations can be had, and that they read the statutes and they understand what's going on, and that, you know, we talked. At the commissioners' meeting, you know, it was stated that the council's holding up folks who are looking for variances, et cetera. That's not true. I know for a fact, because I've seen the, the reports that have gone in, the requests that have gone in. Jesse's approved every single advertising, every single petition to get funded and move through. So, I mean, grandstanding and making false claims about what is and is not being done is not helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Masterson.
Well, that's my point. But my point is not a conversation between our representation and Mr. Jones. My point is our representation and the commissioner's representation, those two attorneys getting together and hashing that all out. In defense of Derek Jones, if, he's an attorney, and he's used to coming to these meetings, and there has been mixed issues there, and this, you know, the signs are, he's supposed to show up and he shows up. I actually believe when they show up and they do their job, they need to be paid. But somebody, there has to be a line of communication that who is in charge of this and give that power to the people that it pertains to. Because a vendor is going to show up and they expect to be paid, but who's giving the direction to have that vendor there? And that's my point. So I think our attorney with the commissioner's attorney, they, we need, they need to talk that out, see where the clear line is, where the power is, because we need to get some things going forward with the plan commission. I mean, taking solar out, out of this.
Yeah.
If the information that I've receiving is correct, the plan commission brings in about twenty thousand dollars a month, plus or minus. So we don't want to hold up anything there, and we don't want personalities to come between what's the best for our county and, and who has what power over what. So I think it needs to come from our attorney and the commissioner's attorney. And in defense of Derek, he was hired to be there, and I believe that when you hire someone, you should pay that person.
Yeah.
And if someone has, you know, it doesn't make any difference, you know, if you've hired them to be there, somebody needs to pay them, and that's my opinion. Okay? And, but we need to know where the line of communication is and where the powers are coming from to do that.
And I, I would be very happy to, to see that. I would say, given the, the personalities at play in this situation, I, I think you may be the person on this council who may be most likely to be able to negotiate that situation.
I would try. I'd like to.
If, if you would be willing to do that, I would, I would make the motion to empower you to do that on behalf of the council. Like I said, you're, you're probably the one in, in the best position to be able to bridge that gap, so.
Now, I don't want the job of approving dispersments or any of that stuff, because we, we have mixed feelings on that.
Yeah.
Okay? But I would do that.
But if, yeah, if you'd be willing to be an, an ambassador to the Board of Commissioners on this on behalf of the council, I, I think that might be the most productive option, so.
Because we need to figure out who's doing what. And it shouldn't be a power struggle. It should be what's the best for the county.
Yeah.
And it should be within whatever realm that we have.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, just let me know when you're available, and hopefully we can get a meeting set, and, you know, Mr. Clebinger and I and you and Stan or whoever can, can sit down and talk.
Exactly.
All right. Yeah, so I, I, there's a motion on the table.
I'll second that.
All right. We've got a motion from the chair, a second by Mr. Falstedt to empower Mr. Masterson to represent the, the council in these discussions. Is there any discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the motion's agreed to.
I'm gonna say something, Justin. At the last council meeting, I made a motion, and it was approved to table the payment of five hundred and forty dollars for Mr. Jones. And I wanted more information. And so Mrs. Johnson, Mr. Masterson, and I actually met with Mr. Adley. And it was a great meeting. It was a great meeting. But through that, it came to light that the plan commission was never actually informed that they were out of money. Like, they didn't have any idea what their budget was. And it was assumed that they all read the newspaper and knew what was going on. And so we just encouraged Mr. Adley to present that to his plan commission, and if he wasn't comfortable with that, I said I was, I would go, I would present. And so he did that at the plan commission, which I was pleased to see. And, and I think some of them weren't necessarily aware of, of what was happening. So in good faith and good grace, like, I agree with Mr. Masterson, a vendor showed up. He gave us services, and I think that we need to pay that five hundred and forty dollars this time because he did show up. It's a matter, I think, of showing grace at this point because he did it knowing full well that he was not approved by the council. But I think for the sake of the county, there was a bill, and I think we need to pay it.
I'd make a motion to support your request to pay the bill. I don't know, it probably has to be re-advertised, I would suspect, for next month. I'll make a motion to support.
Actually, I think I can just approve that in the SBS portal.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I, I support the idea. I support paying it.
And I second that.
All right. I've got a motion by Mrs. Cox, a second by Mrs. Johnson, to, to instruct the chair to instruct the invoice to be, or to make the invoice paid in the SBS portal. Is there discussion?
Again, you know, the contract is on a requested basis, but I, you know, moving forward, you just can't tell the plan commission president, you have, go, go, go get him? Go, go hire Derek Jones and, and let him sue the council. Can't do that. That's, that's, that's language that's not appropriate. Thank you, Jim, for being our ambassador. I think it's a good idea that they talk it out and that, that we move forward, but thank you.
Yeah. Is there further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the motion's agreed to. All right. Moving on in the agenda, we've got Marshall County Economic Development Incorporated. Greg Hildebrand is coming to present on a suggestion for updates to the county comprehensive plan. Good morning, Greg. Welcome.
Good morning. Greg Hildebrand with the Marshall County Economic Development Corporation. And what I'd like to talk about this morning is the county comprehensive plan. I, I talked a little bit to Mr. Harmon earlier. The current comprehensive plan is twenty years old. The plan before that was thirty years old. So we, it's been time that we update that. There is a document that gives the guiding light of which, what development the people of the county would like to see, where that development would take place. There's a couple issues that need to be addressed that aren't in the plan as far as like thirty and thirty-one development. Both those coalitions and NDOT are looking at closing or modifying where the access points are. Course development's gonna be wanted around those, and so we need to address that now. It's about a year-long process for that. MACOG, which we are a member of, can do that. They've done almost all the small town in the city of Plymouth's comprehensive plans in the last handful of years, which is a benefit in that we can use that data to work seamlessly with their comprehensive plans and address any issues that may be missing from theirs. The comprehensive plan, the current one, if you look through it, you'll see that there are still probably some very valid initiatives in there that haven't been addressed, and some things that need to be carried forward. But there are also, technology and times have changed in the last twenty years. So there's things that need to be addressed in there also. So if, if in budgeting process you could allow that money for that, we appreciate it. I think it's a worthwhile cause.
In the budget, I was just looking at it, there is a request for professional services coming out of Plan Commission.
Yeah.
It's a big number.
Yeah, it's, it's, in our discussion with MACOG, they have the bandwidth to do a comprehensive plan for the county starting next year. It would be a, probably a total of about sixty thousand dollars. But the thing is, it's spread over two years. It'd probably be about thirty thousand each, each year. There are some expense as far as like engagement, you know, because a big part of a comprehensive plan is public engagement. We'll be reaching out to the public in public meetings, events, we'll be attending events, seeking opinions, things of that nature.
Okay. And so, so thirty thousand is the number roughly?
Per year, roughly, yeah.
Okay. Did, I don't know if you've seen it, the request is a hundred thousand? So that's?
Yeah, I think he, he was, when he was putting the, the plan to get, or the budget together was before we had actually talked to MACOG about, okay, what are the particulars?
Okay.
So. It, it is, I can't stress enough how, how worthwhile having a good comprehensive plan is. Some of the cities are learning their lesson, their, cities and towns are learning their lesson that you spend that kind of money on a comprehensive plan, traditionally, they sit on a shelf and gather dust. That's not a good use of your time and energy. I know the city of Plymouth has actually pulled out some initiatives and made posters board in their city council chambers so that it's ready right in front of them, that they can make decisions based on those comprehensive plans week in and week out. And I, I would suggest the county do the same. There are some, there are some excellent initiatives in, in the current plan that were never addressed, you know? They're just never, and that's through no particular fault, that's just traditionally what happens to comprehensive plans sometimes. But I think that's a misuse of the time and money.
I want to add, I've read our comprehensive plan, and it's very much save our farmland, protect our farmland, very much is in our comprehensive plan. And I hope to see that that moves forward in our next comprehensive plan.
That, that could very well be. I mean, it's, it, it is a living document that, and once again, public engagement is very important on these, you know, and why we get the eye from the public, what, what is the public looking for? And it could very well be that. One of the other things that's in there, it says something about protecting the quality of life of Marshall County. And, and our population growth, I'm hoping it was a typo in there, says it was thirty percent population growth from nineteen seventy-four to two thousand. I think it was closer to three percent. I think that that might have been a typo. But anyway, the population growth since that, in that last twenty years, has been less than, than three percent. So the quality of life, while protecting it may be important, I think the word might have been better, improve the quality of life. You know, that if we want to attract additional population to the county, which frankly, that's, that's what we need to do to help lighten the load for everybody, is as more people move into the county, our taxes can be spread out, our expenses to, for first responders and, and necessary infrastructure can be spread out to more people. I think improving the quality of life would be a better choice of words than protecting.
Mr. Harmon.
So I personally would support appropriating money of some sort to, to do this, but can you tell me how the process of writing it will occur? Does a plan commission form a subcommittee? Is, is it, how, how does that?
It's normally not, that there'd be some plan commission input. They would probably select a few people for in the plan commission. But typically, what they'll do is gather some invested, some interested individuals, and it'll be a public so that they get more of a well-rounded base put together. And in every decision, they, as they move along, it's taken to the public in the way of public hearings, of public engagement, so that it's really a publicly driven document.
And then the commissioners have final approval?
Yeah, finally. And MACOG will actually do that, though.
Okay. That's it? That's all I want to know?
Yeah.
Well, I would, I would say, you know, obviously, there's probably different ways to do this, and, and different communities have probably done it in different ways. I would think ideally, this should be a, a process that's driven by the commissioners, wouldn't you think?
That's correct. I, I just, what I'm here asking for, and I, I hope I'm not, is that it gets included in the budget.
Sure, sure.
Yeah. Because we, we, there are expenses involved in it, and that's, we're, we're starting there. You know, we, we do need it included in budget for it to happen.
Today's the day that we hear like the presentations on the budget, and then a month from now, we, we can make adjustments. So there'll be plenty of time to collaborate amongst the council to determine what the number is and, and maybe how it's doled out. But we can, you know, you gotta have it, and I, I support it. You know, support the idea, you know?
Yeah. And, and really, it is that North Star that, you know, the, the county will be, you know, is, you've heard that question so many times, is this supported in the, in the comprehensive plan?
Right.
You know, so twenty years is a long time to not have addressed a comprehensive plan.
Greg, I've got a question.
Yeah.
I believe in Marshall County Economic Development, and, and as a company, we contribute to that. Could you tell me or tell us basically what the private contributions would be from companies and individuals within this county in a year that come to your organization?
Probably, it's, most of our contributions come from the county and also the communities in the county. But we probably get another, I'm trying to add them up in my head real quick, sixty to seventy thousand dollars roughly. I mean, I, I, that's, that's all off the top of my head in private investment.
Well, because, you know, I mean, the projected growth of Marshall County, according to the National Association of Realtors and the Indiana Association of Realtors, is only that we will increase in population between now and 2030, two thousand people. Of course, we know people don't always answer censuses.
Right.
When they come to them. But if that is the reality, and those numbers are at that, everything's getting progressively higher at the store, the taxes and everything, there's gonna be fewer people to spread this liability across. So it's very important that we have people coming forward with corporations that are paying decent money to the people that are gonna live in Marshall County, and we want to attract those people here.
Yes.
In turn, we want the people that are educated to come back to Marshall County, you know, to, to share their talents. So.
Yeah.
Do you have any projections, I mean, in the next year, as far as people that have contacted you, as far as any potential job numbers or anything in the next year or so?
The next year or so, I, I would say, and we've kind of de-emphasized the number of jobs that we're, we're incentivizing because frankly, that, the number of open jobs, we have open jobs, you know?
Right.
At, at our low. What we're more emphasizing is the capital, the per-income earnings, you know, per capital income. Anyway, yeah, the number of jobs, probably, I would say, in the two hundred and fifty additional jobs in the year, from just what people have talked to me about and what we're looking at, because I have some announcements coming out later this year. I've got, just yesterday, I talked to a, a firm that's already here in Marshall County that's looking at a hundred-person.
I'm familiar with that one.
Expansion. So, you know?
But you see, Greg, not to interrupt you, but the available jobs that are here, we have to have people that are making a decent living wage.
Yes.
You know, so.
And, and that's the thing I want to stress, too, is that we encourage any business to come here, you know?
Right.
And we're always open for business here in Marshall County. Now, we only incentivize ones that are bringing good-paying jobs.
Right.
I, I think I've told you about industry that has asked to move into the county, asking about what kind of incentives they could get.
Right.
And they were asking for two hundred people at fifteen dollars an hour. And we said, you're welcome to Marshall County, but we're not gonna incentivize two hundred fifteen dollar an hour jobs.
But we also understand there are people that that's their skill set.
Right, right.
So they would be looking at those jobs.
Right. So, so, but we do incentivize, and jobs in the twenty, twenty-five dollar an hour.
Yes.
And that's typically what, what you'll see us.
Thank you.
Talk about.
Any further questions from the council?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. All right. Up next, we've got council items, the consent agenda. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, the practice of the council has been to take additional appropriations and transfers of appropriations en masse. And so the, the consent agenda is at the back of the room, if anybody would like to inspect that. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda? Actually, I should say, is there any member that would like to remove any individual items for consideration? And hearing none, is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I've got a motion by Mr. Falstedt and a second by Mr. Masterson to approve the consent agenda as presented. I will note that on the additional appropriations, there is a line there for a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars roughly for electric vehicles. That's a, that's a grant, right? Yeah, okay. All right, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the consent agenda is agreed to. All those opposed, same sign and the consent agenda is agreed to. And we've got the minutes from our meeting, July 11th, 2024. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Is that Mrs. Cox?
Yes.
Okay. I've got a motion by Mrs. Cox, a second by Mr. Harmon to accept the, to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign and the minutes are approved. We've got ordinance 2024-10 parenthetical six, amending the salary ordinance 2023-25. It looks like this is just a modification for the school liaison position within the health department. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Masterson and a second by Mrs. Cox to approve the ordinance. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign and the salary ordinance is amended. We've got an ongoing opening with the Culver Union Township Public Library Board. I reached out to the library director and he said that Culver Schools is considering two applicants, that whichever applicant they don't approve, he would recommend that we approve that second individual. I reached out to the school superintendent earlier this week and did not get a call back yet, based on their minutes online. It looks like they have not yet selected their appointment and so I guess we're kind of in a bit of a holding pattern on that and as soon as I get a name back from the school corporation, I will let you guys know who that second individual is, so.
I just want to add, I received an email as well from someone in Culver encouraging us to choose someone who lives in Culver, has worked in Culver for a long time and I just responded and said, do you have any candidates that you suggest?
Yeah.
And I didn't get a response.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, so just for, for public information, if anybody would want to contact us, whether that's by, by email, our email addresses and phone numbers are on the website. If you've got any suggestions, we certainly would appreciate that, so. We've got the council budget adoption and meeting schedule adjustment.
Excuse me, that was a request that, to move that from your 6:00 PM. There, I believe there was a conflict to move it to 9:00 AM on October 10th.
Yep. So October 10th was scheduled to be final budget adoption. Typically, we've had that meeting at our regular six o'clock time, but there is a conflict with a, with another event and so I'm recommending that we move that, that October meeting to a 10:00 AM time. Is that, yeah.
You have 10:00 AM or 9:00 AM?
That's up to, that's up to the council.
Nine.
Go 9:00, 9:00.
Nine.
What's better for you, ma'am?
9:30.
10?
No.
Okay. In order for Mrs. Johnson and maybe others to attend, 9:30 seems to be better.
Okay.
And so, Madam Auditor, I move that we, I'm the chairman, I move that we move the October meeting from the evening to 9:30 AM, same date, correct?
Same date, yep.
Okay. That's my motion.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon and a second by Mr. Falsted to adjust the October meeting time. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign and the motion's agreed to. I've got your invoices, which I presented to you in hard copies here before the meeting to approve the outstanding invoices for Labin Law, excuse me, and Sender Dalton. The Sender Dalton invoice is in the amount of $987.77. The Labin Law invoice is in the amount of $1,400 even. Is there a motion?
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Johnson and a second by Mrs. Cox to approve the invoices. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign and the motion is agreed to. Additional items for, for your consideration, the Town of Bourbon has requested that we add Clerk Treasurer Kim Berger to the Public Safety Committee. As an update on the Public Safety Committee, we had some discussion last week regarding the possibility of the, of the county creating sort of a matching grant program from general fund balance to assist the localities in purchasing of radios. It looks like we've got a need kind of wide for about $1.2 million for radios. The suggestion was that the council consider doing half of that, that we could do maybe a portion of that this year and a portion of that next year, but we'll certainly have a formal recommendation at some point, but just something for you all to, to consider at this point. But I'm gonna make a motion to, to add Kim Berger to the Public Safety Committee.
Second.
All right. There's a motion by the chair, a second by Mr. Masterson. Is there discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign and the motion's agreed to.
I'll pass on addition.
Yeah. And I had been trying to hold to an odd number in a nine-member committee, but at some point you have to try and make sure you're keeping everybody happy, so. We've had a recommendation to replace Mrs. Johnson as the council liaison to the planning commission and to appoint Mr. Patterson to that position.
I think that that will just be, since I sit on the planning commission, that gives someone else on the council say so or someone to talk to, for tie to go to, other than, and then it doesn't put me in a position while I'm sitting on the planning commission.
All right. Is there, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we put Mr. Patterson on as our liaison for the planning commission.
Second, Pat.
All right.
Was it supposed to be point of contact or?
Point of contact.
Yeah, yeah. So I've got a motion by Mrs. Cox, a second by Mr. Masterson. Is there discussion? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign and the motion is agreed to. All right, public input. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the council on any topic whatsoever? You're very welcome. All right, and hearing none, we've come to the.
We've got one.
All right. Good morning, ma'am. If you could please sit in front of the microphone there and state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. Nora Blockway, just moved 303 North First Street in Argus. And I just came here today, I want to thank every single member of this council and also Mr. Labin for your leadership. I don't, I, I don't know what we, the people would do if we didn't have you being our voices because we're not being heard. Everything Tim said, you nailed it, that's exactly how I felt watching the meeting on Monday and, like, we, the people, are not even being considered by at least two of the commissioners. I want to thank Commissioner Clotz as well, he's probably listening, he's a one-man show over there, thank you for your leadership and I just want you to know the people support you and thank you. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional members of the public with, with comments? Mr. Hosteller, welcome back.
I'm assuming everybody remembers who I am, so I'll repeat it again, I'm David Hostettler. I live at 133 North Yule Trail, Waukerden in Polk Township. I apologize personally to every one of you, that's not my style, but I admit to have been offended tremendously by the fact that you're yielding to your attorney to get advice on how to talk to me and I don't have that same right in my meeting. It tipped me over the edge, I apologize sincerely, I wish I hadn't done that. Doesn't reflect well on my board, I don't want to do that, excuse me. It's not my style, but I was offended and I'm still offended because you guys are, you're yielding to him and I apologize to you two, I shouldn't have done what I did and, and, but it just reeks of hypocritical that you can do what I can't do and it bothered me, but again, I apologize, that won't happen again, but again, that's all I wanted to say, so, appreciate that.
Appreciate it, Mr. Hosteller.
Thank you.
We're all human, that's what it is.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other members of the public with public comment? All right, and seeing none, we've reached the end of our regular business meeting agenda. The chair is going to recommend a 10-minute recess before we begin the budget hearing and so the, we're going to suspend the meeting until the falling of the gavel at approximately 10:10.